Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we go into executive session. Second.
Second. We're gonna reconvene this meeting of the Richmond School Board for July the 23rd, 2019. And our first item is the approval of the... Yeah, I'm sorry. I apologize. Well, the inspirational moment and the pledge of allegiance. So for the inspirational moment, I just wanted to reflect a little bit as we kinda go into the, right into the beginning of the new school year, just take a moment for all of us to reflect on the upcoming school year and the success of our students and our staff. If we can all just have a moment of silence to reflect on that. Thank you very much. And now for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And if I can now have a motion to approve the agenda. Yes, ma'am.
I move to approve the current agenda of the July 23rd, 2019, school board meeting as set forth.
All right. We have a motion by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Teresa Holmes. And at this time, we'll have the vote. And motion passes seven zero. We will now move on to item 5.1, special recognitions. And actually, I'm gonna take a point of privilege to lead off on the special recognition. Having the opportunity to serve in the board chair role a couple times, it is, it's a tough position to try to corral everybody and keep the meetings moving forward and make sure that you're available for all the things that you need to be available for. And I think our last board chair did an excellent job, Ms. Mackey. Thank you for your year, for all the work and the effort. And I have a special award for you here that I wanna present for... Oops. I'm like a train wreck today. This is my practice before the school starts. That's why we needed a moment of silence. Ms. Mackey, if I can give you this award.
Doing double duty tonight, pictures and script. So, thank you, Dr. Davis, Chair Manning, and board members. I don't know about y'all, but the start of the new school year is approaching a little too quickly for me. So, I'm gonna take us back to the 1819 school year for a little bit tonight. Maybe that'll slow it down. Because we have two students that we wanna recognize for their accomplishments that happened in the 1819 school year. We're gonna start by asking Chakela Green from Bethel-Hamberry Elementary and her Assistant Principal Shannon Holland to please come forward. Come on up, Chakela. Chakela was selected as the South Carolina Economics Young Entrepreneur of the Year, the premier award for youth entrepreneurship. The announcement was made during the 30th Annual Economics and Financial Literacy Awards Day in May. The South Carolina Young Entrepreneur Award was established in 2004 by South Carolina Economics as a way to recognize outstanding elementary, middle, or high school students for their accomplishments and entrepreneurships. Winners have met the challenge of starting their own business, understand the cost and benefits of working for themselves, and are willing to share their experience with their peers. I'm sure everyone is wondering what Chakela did to become the Entrepreneur of the Year. She is an Amazon bestselling author. At age nine, she wrote the book Daddy's Girl, which raises child-parental relationship awareness. Ten percent of all her book sales go towards free community events. Chakela has finished up her time at Bethel-Hamberry, and she is moving on to Muller Road Middle School next year. Congratulations, Chakela. Next, I would ask Bella Ward from Summit Parkway Middle School and her principal, Ms. April Shell, to please come forward. You may remember that last board meeting, I mentioned that we had two Duke TIP Grand Scholars. This is our second one, Bella, who I said is a student at Summit Parkway Middle School. We are very proud to recognize her as a Duke TIP Grand Scholar. And a Grand Scholar must score at least 670 on the SAT in reading and writing and/or 680 in math. For the ACT, they must have a 31 in English and/or reading, a 29 in math, or a 28 in science. And this is in middle school, not in high school. And it's not the PSAT or the PACT. It is the real deal, the real high school version. So, to make those scores and then make it to not just the Duke TIP for the state, but Duke TIP Grand, which only 4% of all participants in the Duke University Talent Identification Program qualify for that recognition. So, congratulations, Bella, on this outstanding achievement. And so, I guess that's about all I have. So, the next school year's coming quickly, no matter what I do, how many times I stand up here. But thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight and recognize our students.
Thank you, Libby. We next have item 6.1, approval of our consent agenda. If I can have a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to approve the consent agenda for tonight's meeting, July 23rd, 2019.
Motion's been made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Teresa Holmes. If we can now take the vote. And motion passes seven zero. Next, we have item 7.1, public participation. I've got Mr. Gus Philpott signed up. Mr. Philpott, just remember, we record these, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Members of the board and superintendent, I'm Gus Philpott. Over the past four months, I've had many conversations with law enforcement agencies and other agencies regarding the problems that I've called to the attention of the board. Among my contacts have been the Richland County Sheriff's Department, South Carolina Ethics Commission, the Attorney General, SLED, South Carolina Department of Education, the Governor's Office, my state senator and state representative, the School Boards Association, and others. In a March meeting at the Sheriff's Department, a sergeant investigator asked me if I wanted Mrs. Mackey and Ms. Holmes kicked off the board. Those were his words. I answered that I did not.
Mr. Philpott.
All I wanted was for them to take the oath of office and become legal members of the board. I still do.
Mr. Philpott, just, we're asking not to mention names during the public session. If we can just avoid using particular names, please.
Thank you. And I still do. The purpose of my comments tonight is to request a meeting with the board chair and the attorney for the school district to discuss two matters. Why the district believes the two trustees elect, who did not legally take the oath of office, are allowed to sit on the board.
Mr. Philpott, I'm sorry to interrupt you again, but that's actually not, that's not an actual board matter. That's a matter with, for ethics and things that are outside board control. I have no control over that. That's outside of my purview as the board chair or us as a board. So, I'm happy to discuss this with you offline, but as far as public participation, that's, it's not a matter that the board has direct control over.
The second matter I'd like to discuss with you is whether the district has engaged in securities fraud because of erroneous, misleading, and incomplete information in the bond documents for the $26 million sale of bond anticipation notes on April 11th of this year. And I will contact Mr. Manning to arrange a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have item 8.1, the legislative update. Dr. Miley?
Thank you. Good evening. I'll be real brief. I just, we don't really have a whole lot from the legislature. However, I got a note yesterday, an email from the Department of Revenue and Physical Affairs on the surplus anticipated for FY 1819 at the state level. It hadn't been finalized. They actually have some final closing out to do, but it's $398 million of surplus revenues in FY 1819. I actually had lunch today for another issue with Mr. Rainwater, who's head of that department. And he said that he, they're anticipating roughly $300 million in new money, and this will be $400 million in mostly recurring money. So, I'm updating you this because next year could be a pretty good year for South Carolina, if so, if the legislature so chooses. And it might be a good year for advocacy in terms of education, which we do all the time. But there should be additional funds this year that hopefully will be, some of it will come our way. So, I just wanted to update you, and I'll be glad to update you if we get any more information from the Department of Revenue and Physical Affairs. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Miley? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is item 9.1, our executive session items. If I can have a motion on our student appeals.
Mr. Chair, I move that student number one attend Blythewood Academy.
A motion's been made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. If we can just make sure the motion's correct. Is that correct, Ms. Agostini?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote. And motion fails five no, two yes. If I can have a...
Mr. Chair?
Another motion. Yes, or Mr. Shad?
I move that student number one return to their home school with strict probation.
Motion's been made by Mr. Shad. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Elkins Johnson. If we can just make sure that the motion's correct. That look correct, Mr. Shad? All right. Is there any discussion? No discussion, we'll take the vote. And motion passes six to one. Next on our agenda is item 9.2, student admission request into the district's adult education program. If I can have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we allow student number one to attend the district's adult education program.
And with that motion, do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Elkins Johnson. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll take the vote. And motion passes seven zero. Next, item 9.3, request for at-home instruction. If I can have a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we grant the request for at-home instruction.
Motion's been made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Elkins Johnson. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote at this time. Motion passes seven zero. Next on our agenda is all business, no action requested. Dr. Davis, report on capital improvements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, we have the update from Dr. Miley regarding our capital improvement updates. Dr. Miley?
Thank you. As you know, Will Anderson is normally giving these. I'll try to fill in tonight. We'll start with the very first slide. One is everything is going pretty much on as we expect, right on target. North Springs, we have shown this before. We didn't have it in our last months, and several people asked where, what happened to North Springs. So, we wanted to remind everybody that that was one of the projects that we completed during the spring break. Next, we have some of the security entrances. Fifteen of the school sites, the front entrances, are all under construction and will be hopefully finished by the start of school. We have several other school sites that will be, the entrances will be improved. Rice Creek and Lake Carolina Lower, correct? Bridge Creek and Lake Carolina Lower are both gonna be, they're under design now. They'll be under construction and finished during, during Christmas break. And there are other, several other sites that we'll be reviewing and improving those sites as time, as we get to those sites. The next, oh, I think I have the clicker. That's right. Thank you. See, Will would have known it automatically that there was a clicker up here. The replacement schools, I think I just, yeah. Our other safety projects, our roofs, you know, if you remember right, we have about 14 or 15 roof replacements. They're all, bids are in for all of them. The work has begun, and they'll be completed during the course of the school year, between eight and 10 months. Asked if that was gonna be too noisy, and it's not that noisy of a, of a job. Obviously, there'll be some, some interruption, but the roofs will be completed by next spring. HVAC design, the design has begun and completed, and the construction will start on those as we get closer to the timeline for those construction projects. And please, if you have any questions, let me know. I'll, I'll hold, I'll go find Will and answer them for you next week sometime. Replacement schools, the schematic design has been completed on Blythewood High School and CFK North. All the portables have been removed from Blythewood High School. The portables that we are taking off of CFK North have been removed. I think Will mentioned the last time that that site will be able to be the new CFK permanent facility. Will be able to be built while we still have school for CFK there at Muller Road site. So, we won't have to relocate those, those students. Blythewood High School, the schematic design is completed, and we are scheduled to begin construction probably in the February, January, February range. Forest Lake, we had a kickoff meeting in the first part of July with all the design team and principal. And our team will have a first public meeting for that in terms of meeting with the community on September the 3rd. We'll update you on and remind you of that notice. E.L. Wright, we met with the design team on July the 12th, and we're still working on the layout and the budget for that project. Bethel-Hamberry, we're working to meet with the design team in September. It's a little bit later in the timeline, and so we're working on that project. Stadiums, both designs have been finished. The schematic designs for the two stadiums have been completed. After that, bless you, after the schematic designs, working contract, construction documents will be begun, and those two projects are underway. Construction should be scheduled for late December to start, probably, more likely the first of the year, in terms of the actual construction on those two, two stadiums. We are rearranging and working very hard, making sure that all spring sports have a place to take place. We think we have resolved that, working with the middle schools, the ADs at both the high schools and the middle schools. About the only one we're still working on is track. Right now, we don't have a designated place to have track practice. The renovation projects, we are, the support center in Blythewood Academy, the Killian Bus Hub, we're all, we're working on construction documents. The 35% complete. The support service center, we've got about 50% of that one complete in terms of design documents. Work to start on the support center is going to be designed for winter of 2020. So, it's about eight months away. Construction will start in the fall for the Killian Bus Hub. As you know, we're gonna expand the bus hub, move the bus hub out of support service center, relocate it all to Killian, and then renovate the support service center. RNE and Ridgeview, you know there's substantial improvements at both Ridgeview and RNE, and we're working on the cash flow and updated timeline for those. Other projects, we've got the camera system. We have selected a new vendor, camera vendor and consultant. We went out on RFP for that, for that consultant to help us get a more comprehensive analysis of our camera needs and the system that we need to make sure they're all connected. We have a visitor, a new visitor management system in terms of lobby guard. We're using, we're shifting to Identikit, and it's being rolled out in schools now. We have the IT display project. I believe there's something like 2,100 display units going into the 2,100 classrooms throughout the district. So, they'll all have the latest technology. That's begun. They're doing that mostly during the summer. That will continue during the fall and the spring, spring semesters at night, so that it won't be disruptive to the students. And we'll complete that, I believe, in about 18 months for those 2,100 new display units and interactive display units. Buses, we're still waiting on the buses. We hope to get the, them to come in at the end of July. Usually, we are anticipating that timeline. Usually, there's a six to nine month lead time from the time you order buses until the time, until they're delivered. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Dr. Holmes?
Yes. Dr. Miley, have we gotten to where we're on the phase two selection of people who are gonna be the lead in certain contracts? Have we gotten to that phase yet?
No, ma'am. We have not gotten to that.
Okay. When we get to that particular phase, could you please let the board know? I'd like to attend some of those meetings.
Be glad to. Be glad to.
Thank you.
You know, I believe the first projects were about 300 million. So, that's still about $150 million of projects that we will still have in that second phase of the, of the construction.
Okay. If you would just let me know, I'd like to attend those.
We will. Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Miley.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, item 11, old business action requested. Our policies, Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, we're bringing back before you old business action requested, the following policies that you see have been covered in the last board meeting. And so, these policies are up for approval, which is customary with our second reading, regarding policies of resignation of instructional staff, instructional staff, administrative staff reduction in force, discipline, suspension and dismissal of professional staff, non-school employment of support staff, support staff hiring, support staff vacations and holidays, staff concerns, complaints, and grievances, tobacco-free school districts, tobacco use by students, tobacco-free schools, and high school credit for middle school.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to approve the policies as set forth by Dr. Davis, items 11.1 through 11.11, as presented by staff with the recommended revisions.
All right. Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Agostini.
I submitted a couple of recommendations and things to take into consideration yesterday. Are those included in what's your recommendation?
It was a part of my motion with the recommended revisions.
Okay. I wasn't sure if it was staff recommendations or board. All right. Thank you.
Dr. Davis, were those included?
Yes. They were included with the, in the recommendations received by, from Ms. Agostini were included in the revisions.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. With no further discussion, we'll take the vote. Haven't seen anything yet.
Mr. Chair?
Just do hand votes?
Yes, I'll have to call for a hand vote.
All right. Hand votes, all in favor. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Next, we have item 12, new business, no action requested. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, we're bringing before you the following items for new business, no action requested, policy revisions to GBEB-B, staff conduct with students, which is a new policy, revisions to GBEBDA, criminal records, check, new policy, proposals for revisions to GC, professional staff, GDQD, discipline, suspension, and dismissal of support staff, GBI, staff participation in political activities, GBJ, personnel records and files, GBEC, drug and alcohol-free workplace in schools, GBGA, staff health, GBGD, workers' compensation, GTA, support staff positions, GDB, support staff contracts and compensation, DKC, expense authorization reimbursements. And then we'll have an update for you for the conference center. And then following that, we'll bring before you the policy, KF, community use of school and district facilities, KFB, community use in district conference facility.
All right. Thank you very much. I guess we'll start with item 12.1, GBEBB, staff conduct with students. Staff, any, or I mean, board members, any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a concern with... Uh, I have a concern with, uh, policy GBEBB. The first paragraph where it states, "For the, the purpose of this policy, staff includes but is not limited to employees, contracts, service providers, school volunteers, student teachers, and interns." And while I wholeheartedly agree with this policy, um, I would not like to see us set precedence by including in staff people other than our employees. I'm wondering if we can add an additional paragraph to define them or write a new policy that mimics this to include that, that group of people.
Okay.
It's the pleasure of the board.
Is, is, is there anybody who objects to that recommendation?
No rejection, no, uh, objections to the recommendation. I was ask, would ask if there is a motion to strike, uh, strike something from the policy as presented, um, or add particular phrasing up to this policy or substitute a particular phrase for this, for this portion of that policy, so that when we bring this back to you, it will be, um, in second reading of what you all have approved the changes for.
I mean, we can't officially make a motion because it's no action, but if there's, if there's, you're asking if there's specific language that somebody wants to have added, they need to make that recommendation?
You couldn't, you actually can't officially make a motion to change the wording to the policy in the first, the first revision of, of the policy.
Okay, um. Okay, I don't think we can add a motion. I'm sorry, we're having a little discussion about, uh, procedure. Can we do a motion with, without 24-hour delay?
Yeah, it is, it's the first, so it's not official vote.
Okay.
Official vote is on the second, so you can't do it on the second.
Okay.
This is the first reading, so you can make a motion to add, subtract, submit, I mean, substitute.
Did you have specific language that you wanted?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I don't have specific language, but if you're asking me to make a motion tonight, I would just strike the second sentence completely, um, and not define it and then write a separate policy that includes the same information, but includes contract service provider, school volunteers, student teachers, and interns.
Okay. So you want us to make a motion on that?
Mr. Chair, I would, I would like for motion be made for the purpose of, i- if the motion is to strike the second, the second pa- I'm sorry, the second sentence in the first paragraph.
All right, Mr.
Okay, so the motions, I mean, there's been a motion made by Ms. Agostini. Um, do I have a second for that? Seconded by Elkin, by Dr. Elkins Johnson. And then we do a hand vote, I guess? Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Um, I just need some clarification from Mrs. Agostini. Is she saying to strike the entire sentence, which also includes employees? So there's no definition of what staff members is in this, or is she saying she wants to strike everything else but the word employees?
No, my, my, my recommendation was, um, to strike the whole sentence. I want to say that I'm sure that we have staff defined someplace else. If we need to define staff as employees, we can say that for the purpose of this policy, staff includes employees, I'm fine with that as well. But what I do not want included in this, again, are the contract service provider, school volunteers, student teachers, and interns.
And what, and what's the rationale behind that?
They're not staff, and I would hate to set precedence saying that the rest of these people are considered staff of Richland too.
But you are suggesting that we create a different policy that includes those folks?
Uh, yes, because I think they need to be held to the same standard as our staff, but they are not considered staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. From a, a legal perspective, would, is it okay to have those folks included under staff even though they're not typically staff? I mean, is there another word we can use besides just staff? Okay, well, I have a motion and I have a second, so, um, I guess at this point, we'll take a vote whether to approve Ms. Agostini's, uh, motion, and then we'll do a hand vote. Everybody in favor? Okay, what is that? One, two, three, four, five. And everybody, um, opposed? Was it unanimous?
You're abstaining.
You're abstaining, okay. All right. Any other recommendations for GBEBB? All right, move on to item 12 dot two, uh, GBEBDA, criminal record check. Any recommendations?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. If you look at that policy, you have some bullets as to, um, background checks, and one said the age of the individual. Are you guys going to put an age on that? And then also, it says the length of time since conviction or plea. Are you going to add a length of time to that as well?
And you were referring to, um, par- paragraph number three under state, under sled background checks. It says the age of the individual.
Yes.
And...
The length of time.
The length of time.
Conviction or plea.
That is something that we review, that we look at the age of the person when they, um, can, if they do have criminal background history. We look at how old they were and the length of time. Seven years is the standard years that we look at. Um, anything after seven is, um, is typically something that we are able to excuse, as long as it's not something that's a felony or violation that violates the, um, the state ethics or the state law.
Right, and you just said seven years, but that's not indicated in here or the age.
It says the length of the time since conviction or plea.
And you're saying seven years would be the length of time since conviction or plea? Is that for misdemeanor or is that for felonies or what?
For anything that is not on the list, um, and I will, will refer back to, um, the law here, um, section 23, 3130, uh, dissemination of criminal history, conviction record upon request, and certification requirements for criminal background check, forty, um, regulation 4551. Um, so what, what we look at again is the seven years, um, that is standard, um, procedure to look at a seven-year window.
Right, but my question still was not asked. You're saying seven years for, is that misdemeanor or is that for felony?
For any conviction. We look, we look at any conviction and look at what, what is the conviction, um, and we look at, look at it, um, based on the criteria that's provided, um, based on the.
So all of these things in, is taken in consideration, and this is a personal concern for me, especially since unforeseen ordeal that I went through. And of course, the age of the individual, I was an adult, but sometimes you still have people confront you who, it doesn't matter what your age are, you have to defend yourself. So I want to know, when we're talking about age, what does that matter with the age of the incident, especially if you're not the person who may have caused the infraction? So are you taking e- everything into consideration or are you just taking each bullet?
What, what we allow is we allow for individuals to actually write a statement as to what occurred. So we're able to look at that, and we actually sometime bring them in person to have in-person meetings. So if they have information and they have a conviction, we're able to sit down with them, they're able to write a statement. A lot of times, they provide character, um, references as well as word references to say about their character. So those, it's a lot of things that's taken to, into consideration.
I would like to see that added to this, if it's the will of the board, that we will allow, um, sled report to submit a character reference or, what was the other thing you mentioned?
We, um, allow them to write a statement.
To write a statement. I love to see that, and then if we're going to go with the length of time since conviction or plea, seven years, I'd love to see that reduced to about two or three years.
Standard procedure in the H.R., H.R., and this is what I was taught back in the 90s, is that it's a seven-year window, um, sev- seven years is.
If you can provide that to us.
Dr. Elkins Johnson, we need that in the form of a motion, um, what you're requesting.
Okay.
So go ahead, if you want to make the motion, what you're asking for.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that on GBEBDA, that we insert, that we allow the person to write a statement, and also, I'd like to make a motion pending, informate, I'm sorry, one at a time? Okay.
Okay, so you want to do each of those parts individually? Okay, all right, so we have that as a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Teresa Holmes. Is there any discussion? With that, we'll do all in favor, right hand. One, two, three, four, all right, and all opposed and abstaining?
Agreed.
Yes, yeah, all right, so motion passes, uh, four to two. Okay, Dr. Elkins Johnson, you have another motion.
Well, I'm not sure about the other motion because I need to get the, um, the law. I think you mentioned that it's seven years.
Yes, ma'am.
So if you could provide that to us.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to see what that is, but I also would like to go back with the age of the individual. Because if you can give me an example, when you say age of the individual, is that person under 30 or over 60? What do you mean by age of individual?
If a person was 18 and they were arrested for DUI and they're 25 and they're applying for a job, that's something that we take into consideration, or if they were 21 and now they're 40, those, those are things that we take into consideration.
So what if a person is now 50 and mature like I am, but you have an unforeseen incident of ignorant people sometimes? So are we going to look at the age 50 and say, because you're older, now we can't consider that, or are we going to say, okay, this person is older and mature, but this is their first offense and we allow second chances?
Well, what we do is we look at everything, and again, that's, that's why we allow for people, and if you look at our applications, our applications allow for a statement. Um, so that's something that is provided, um, that information, um, is allowing you to explain what, why the arrest occurred.
Okay, and my last question is, are we giving folks, because of course now this is personal to me, so my question would be, are we allowing people who come into the district a fair opportunity if they do have a sled, um, incident on a sled report, or do we look at that and we place that to the side, or are we giving them a fair opportunity?
Everyone is provided a fair opportunity who works here.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next, yes, sir.
Just as a, a point of clarification, thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. I want to make sure that we're clear that what you were stating is that this is in, as far as the seven years is industry, industry standards.
Yes.
Or practice, but there's not, it's not a law or anything that will.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, it is industry standard.
Okay.
That is correct. Well, in that case, I'd like to make a motion, if it's not a law.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to go back and make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to go back and make a motion that the length of time since conviction or plea will be two years or less.
Okay, motion's been made by Dr. Elkins Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Teresa Holmes. If we can have a vote all, or is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Ms. Williams, if, if this motion passes, does that mean that you all are limited to a person's criminal past beyond the two years? Is that my understanding?
We, 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 if this motion passes, then we have a two-year window, so if it's passed, if it's year three, then it's something that we would be, have to look at considering that employee, you know, and consider.
Uh, uh, I'm sorry, I don't understand you. You said if it's year three, then you what now?
Because if it passes and you're saying that it's a two-year versus seven-year window, we'll then look at a two-year window versus a seven-year window.
What does that mean? What does that mean, a two-year window? I don't, I don't understand.
Because it's been two years, now we look at the criminal act, and it's been seven years or out, so we're in 2019, uh, 2019 minus seven is 2012, so we look at anything that occurred prior to that, if it's in 2007, 2019, if that means that.
If I, if I may offer some, if I may offer maybe some clarification for you, Mr. Shad. Well, my understanding is this, is that right now, we can look at a person's criminal history up to about a seven-year period. So we could take in consideration any action that the person has had seven years, um, from the, from the conviction. So the conviction happened in 2000, will, anything up to two, if it's 2007, that conviction is kind of, is something that we can look at. If the conviction happened in 2000 and, um, uh, 2000 and is now 2017, we were only really looking up to anything beyond 2007. They've been, had no conviction since 2000, since that 2000, 2000 infraction, seven years after that, they're, they're, they're good to go, they're clear. If we say it's two years, then we only have a two-year timeframe that we can look at. So anything that has, anything that has happened after that two years, we really are not, we're not, um, yeah, before, I'm sorry, before that two years, we're not focusing on, we can't focus on.
Um, I.
So, so, okay, as I understand it, the industry standard is, you look at anything seven years to present. Anything on the eighth year to 15th year, 20 years ago, you don't even look at, well, it's on the sled report, but you don't consider that.
We, we get, we look at the nature of it because it's important, if there's some person who was, um, had possession in. Possession or, um, within a school zone, that is something that we take into consideration because every time we're looking at a sled report, we're looking at what's in the best interest of our student.
Right. So it, so if this motion passes, where previously you were looking at something seven years prior to the application, if this motion passes, now you're looking at just what happened two years and up to present. So someone could have done something in year three that may or may not allow them to be a part of this district, but because if this motion passes, you all will no longer consider that.
That is correct. If, if that is in board policy.
Hold on, that's, if this motion, if this motion passes, that is what is going to occur. Year three and beyond, we, the district will not consider that, except if it's a very severe situation or it affects children directly.
Correct, yes.
And, and let me understand this too, um, and this does apply to the motion, is this from the time of conviction or plea as it's currently written, or is this also if once someone gets off probation? And the reason I ask that is because someone may get on probation, three years ago, still be on probation, which means that they potentially have some prison time still hanging over their head, but because we don't look in year three when it was first given, we only looking at the, at the time of the conviction, they very well could be hired by the district, violate their probation, and then it's all on the news.
But we're not talking about probation. This policy says conviction, it does not say probation. So we're talking about.
Actually, it does. It says conduct or remedial actions during probation, so.
Then we need to separate that.
So that means it's looking for someone's conduct while they were on probation as well.
No.
And participation in pre-trial intervention and/or expungement.
I'm referencing to conviction.
Okay, Dr. Teresa Holmes?
Um, yes, um, normally, I know the seven-year window is there. Is there, but I thought the seven-year window pertain to if a, if, if they have done a misdemeanor crime that had no impact on children. I think if someone has done something like a murder, the set, that, that statute with a seven-year doesn't apply because that can be looked at wholesale from the beginning to the end. I think what was folk, the focus is, if someone shoplifted and they haven't shoplifted for two years, that's the kind of things, so we might need to be clarification as to misdemeanor or convictions for certain felonies, because I think we're lumping everything into one category, and they're not, a, a, a shoplifter is not a murderer. You understand what I'm saying? So I think that we might need to re, go back and revise this and look at this again because I see what Dr. Elkins is saying, but then I see what everybody else is saying. Of course, you're not going to have a murderer that has been out for two years and you're going to say, let him teach children. I absolutely agree with that, but what everybody else is saying with that, but I think that that seven-year statute is talking about things that pertain to endangerment and harm of students or drugs or anything like that. Those kind of things don't have a limitation on it. That's when you probably. That's when you probably should need to call the person in and have the conversation with them and find out how long it is. But not when you're talking about a simple conviction like shoplifting and not, you know, that, not that you should do that, but talking about something like shoplifting, you don't need to wait seven years to find out if somebody's going to shoplift again. If they, if, they may have, you know what I'm saying? It's a difference. Does that make, does that make sense, what I'm saying to you?
We do have to consider the job that they apply for because if it's a bookkeeping position.
Well, absolutely.
And the person shop.
Well, they, I, I understand that, but what I'm saying.
Those are things that we take into consideration.
I know, I understand that, that, but what I am saying is for the sake of this particular policy, what I think the clarity needs to be made as to misdemeanor offenses as opposed to felony offenses. Felony offenses, there shouldn't be a statute, you have to look at that because you have to look at the whole nature of a person that committed a felony. Misterminers, they, things, things happen. So I think that there needs to be a little more work done on this policy and maybe re-present it.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, yeah, cut, so I want to, Ms. Shad, I, I got you a hold on a second. We got a, I got a motion on the table already and I have Ms. Agostini who had, uh, previously was asked to be recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a que, just a quick question. If they show up on the sled report, that does not disqualify them for a position? Thank you.
Ms. Shad.
Thank you, just for the benefit of the board, the next paragraph concerns any violent crimes that are committed. It specifically says the district will not employ anyone who's convicted or pled guilty to a violent crime. So that, I take that to mean that we're really only talking about nonviolent felonies as well as, um, and nonviolent misdemeanors, because if it's a violent misdemeanor, it looks like that would still apply, that would disqualify the person. So yes, however, if you're talking about shoplifting or, uh, embezzlement, I'm sure that's something that the district would be concerned, right? But specifically as to the motion, um, I have no problem with the district. In fact, I would encourage the district to still have that flexibility and use their best judgment. And again, these are only considerations, these are only certain things that you all will consider. It's not all-inclusive, you all are going to take a lot of this into play. These are just, as I look, as I read that last sentence in that third paragraph, is that it essentially is just giving cues, not only to you all, but to the applicant, that you all will consider everything globally. And these are just some of the things that, um, you all will consider. But again, I, I, I'm not in favor of limiting, um, the timeframe from seven years, two years. In fact, apparently it's not something like Dr. Davis said, there, there's a law or anything in place, it's just standard, um, across the board in H R. So I, I, I'd be in favor of them continuing to have that flexibility.
Dr. Holmes.
Um, yes, um, so are we, so are we going to say with this particular policy that, that all these factors are just base considerations? That it will not eliminate you from employment? Is that what we're saying with this policy?
It's whatever the will of the board is.
Okay, I can, I, I think I agree with Mr. Shad on the vagueness of it. If we are saying that this is a policy that is saying that that's just a factor and not the wholesale of a consideration for an employment for someone who has a misdemeanor. Because it's clearly, if it say, I can't see because I have my glasses on, but if it says the other part about the, the convictions of murder and, and drug possession or whatever it says up there, I can't really see it. But, um, then that's a different animal. But if that's, if you're saying that we're going to use this as one of the considerations, I don't have a problem with the policy.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Agostini.
I was just going to answer for, uh, it says, the second sentence, the district will consider the results of all criminal record history checks on an individual basis.
Okay.
Right. Okay, Dr. Elkins Johnson, can you repeat your, I'm sorry, your motion, just to make sure we're all clear?
I think my motion was that I wanted to add two years to the length of time since conviction or plea. And I think Mrs. Williams stated that it's seven years, but I wanted to see if we could reduce that. Excuse me?
But either way, she's wanting to.
Yes, I would like to reduce that to two.
So we have a motion, we have the second discussion, so at this time, we'll take the vote, all in favor, uh, if you'll raise your right hand. Okay, uh, all, um, opposed, if you'll raise your right hand. And all that are abstaining. All right, motion passes, or motion fails.
What was the motion up there? I don't see it.
It was for your, it was for the two-year change that you requested.
Right, but the vote, I don't see it up on.
No, because we're, we're doing a hand vote. It was three, no, one, one yes, three no and abstain.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. All right, um, any other recommendations for G B E B D A? We'll move on to twelve dot three, um, G C, uh, professional staff. Board members, any comments? All right, policy twelve dot four, G D, Q D, discipline suspension and dismissal of dismissal of support staff, any recommendations? Policy G B I, staff participation in political activities, which is twelve dot five, any recommendations? Moving on to twelve, I'm sorry.
For twelve point five. I do have a question, and I think maybe Dr. Davis, maybe you can answer this for me. It said, um, denied and the employee declines to resign, the superintendent may initiate termination procedure consistent with board policy. Can you explain that bullet point for me, please?
If the request for continued employment is denied and the employee declines to resign, the superintendent may initiate termination procedures consistent with board policy. That policy is, that's, that's basically saying whatever procedures are in place for if you are a continuing employee, if you are, um, an annual employee, if you're a classified employee, what is consistent with our policy for the, for the starting of a, of the termination of an employee?
No, but this is back to staff participation in political action. I think it's political action, what is it?
Activities.
Activities.
I'm trying to read my own writing. So explain that to me. Give me an example. And the reason why I'm asking is, um, one, I was an employee in Richland, too, back in twenty twelve, when I decided to run for school board. However, it was a policy stated that if you talked about your campaign during school hours or on school property, or, this is the key piece, or if someone reports you and said they overheard you talk, you can have grounds for termination. And I'm thinking, but what if someone just made that up? How do you know? And that's why I want you to give me an example of this right here, because this is what is saying here, that the superintendent may initiate termination procedures consistent with board policy. So help me understand that piece.
It is my understanding that this policy really doesn't speak directly to whether or not you can participate in, in political activities. More so, this is about whether or not you're seeking to hold some sort of political office. So for example, if a, an, an employee runs for school board and wins school board, then that employee would need to resign his or her position. So this is about them holding an office, not necessarily their participation in, in polit, in political acti, activities.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for that.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, I just have one comment or suggestion under political activities in schools, it's on page two, it's just grammar, but the second sentence says additionally, the board also believes, to strike the word also. That would be redundant.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion. Do I have a second for that motion? Second by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, um, any other recommendations? All right, item twelve dot six, uh, G B J personnel records and files, any recommendations?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am, Dr. Elkins.
I have a question. On G B J, it states that employee, school principals or immediate supervisor can have the opportunity to review a personnel records. And I'm just wondering, why would we allow school principals to review someone's personnel record?
Dr. Elkins Johnson, can you tell me what paragraph that they, that's in?
I cannot, but I know, I know, I know the case, too.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I think.
The dis, the district will permit access to a personnel file to the following persons without consent of the employee about whom the file is maintained. Employee, school principal, immediate supervisor, superintendent.
Right, and I would love to strike through school principal or immediate supervisor because I think this could be a conflict of interest. It also, also could be a part of the HIPAA law. Because if I'm an employee and my school principal do not like me, I don't need them to go back and look at my personnel file to see what's in there. I think they should only be concerned with what has occurred for that particular year. They have no reason or no need to have to go back to review an employee's file.
Just for clarification, your medical file is separate from your personnel file? Those are kept in separate places.
Okay, still same difference, whether it's medical or whether it's notes that has previously been in that personnel file. I don't think a principal should be a part of going in someone's personnel file unless it's their own. So I would love to see that removed and only have the superintendent and of course H R. But I don't think your immediate supervisor or principal should be allowed to go in any of their employees' personnel file. That could be something that could later be ho, held against that person.
Just as a.
Go ahead.
Doc. So it just as a, a, a alternate philosophy, uh, to present Dr. Elkins Johnson, it, it puts a principal or say a director at a disadvantage and say, say I'm a, a brand-new principal and I just, which, which, I just, I was a brand-new principal just assigned to a school. I have no idea of the person's evaluations, uh, whether or not they have been written up for violations. That's important in order to understand, um, let's say you have an offense that happened, you wouldn't know if it was a second offense or a first offense. If a person had committed some sort of disciplinary, had a disciplinary issue as a, as an employee, you would have no idea if there's a first offense, a second offense, or a third offense if you didn't have the ability to look at the person's personnel record.
No, sir. I totally, um, disagree with that. That person has no right to go back to look at that. If they have an issue that is going on with the child, I'm sorry, with that employee at their school, then that's when they should notify H R and say, this is the issue that is occurring with this employee at my school. Is this something that's occurred in the past or how can we rectify this situation? I don't think I need you to go back and look at my personnel file if I had an issue with one principal and then the next year I didn't have that principal, so now I'm having a great year, now someone else wants to see what they can catch you on. I totally disagree with that.
Dr. Elkins Johnson, is that your rec, uh, your motion is to remove employee, school principal slash immediate supervisor?
Yes, it is.
Okay, motion's been made by Dr. Elkins Johnson. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Second by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, or Mr. Shad.
Immediately before that, I get, I guess it's page one, it, it, it talks about additions to the personnel file and it involves performance evaluation, complaint or suggestion for improvement. It would seem to me that the supervisor or principal who, um, has been supervising this person on a day-to-day basis, they obviously need to give input. And if they want to compare an employee's performance either through that contract year or compare from year to year, it would seem like they would need to have access to the personals, the personnel files so they can then, um, see if that person has made some marked improvement or if it's possible, you know, in terms of them deciding whether they want that, um, employee back. Plus, if we have a new principal or immediate supervisor that's there, it seems like they would want to know something about the history of their staff, um, when they start making decisions on what they're planning on doing for the upcoming school year. But if anyone wants to address that, then I'm ap, absolutely happy to hear it.
Dr. Holmes.
Um, yes, I disagree with that, Mr. Shad. That, that to me is reminding of, we don't do that with children. We don't want children going from one teacher to the next teacher and the teacher going back in the student's file, looking at every infraction that they did in that particular classroom. And so then they have a preconceived notion as to how that child will be in their classroom. If you, if you notice, it depends on the, it, it depends on the teacher. The child can go to another teacher and have no incidents at all, whereas a teacher, the same thing can happen. There, there have been incidents where there have been personal conflicts or they just don't get along, or there may have been an incident, but they have been sent to a new situ, situation or position and they're doing fine there. And to throw them back under the bus to have somebody go dig up in their file when it's not a necessity seems like an overkill when we don't even do that to teachers and we don't ask teachers to do that. Matter of fact, we prefer teachers don't. We prefer teachers examine and, and, um, make an evaluation of individual students based on what they see about them, not based on what somebody else sees. So I think if we do that for children, I don't see why we wouldn't do that for teachers.
Dr. Elkins Johnson.
Yes, and I just want to give, um, a few other examples. Let's just take a look at our superintendent. We have to evaluate our superintendent. What if a new board member came on and said, well, you know, I want to go back and look at all the old evaluations of this superintendent? That can blur their decision on how they want to evaluate someone based on how someone else personally evaluated them because they could have had a conflict. And just an example, when I was a school administrator in this district, I can recall a time when there was a principal that had a conflict with a teacher. They just, it's oil and water, they did not get along. That person wrote a lot in that person's personnel file. The very next year, that person was transferred to a different school and became teacher of the year. So we have to be very careful and mindful of how we do that. And then I'm just going to use my own self as an example. As an employee here before, I've had a principal write, I think I'm better than everyone else. That was on my evaluation. What if the next principal who wanted to hire me said, well, you know, this principal says, Dr. Elkins thinks she's better than someone else. What does that mean? So I don't think we need to prejudge someone, I think we need to give that person a fair opportunity. And not be allowed to go back and look at the evaluations. And if they have a concern about the employee, I think that's what Ms. Williams and Dr. Davis is here for, to go back and say, tell me what your concern is and allow you guys to go back and look at the personnel file and then give them some feedback. Thank you.
All right, if we can have the vote at this time? Uh, all in favor? Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, I just want to ask a question. Is it still the law, you cannot put anything in anyone's personnel file without their knowledge and them having a copy?
That is indeed true.
Mr. Mannan, can I comment on that? That's the law, but not everyone follows the law. And I've seen that and I witnessed that. So yes, we can sit here and say, well, you know, that's what the law says, so that's it, we're done, drop, drop the mic. No, that's the law, but everyone does not follow the law. So I think we need to give everyone a fair opportunity.
All right, if we can please have the vote at this time, all in favor, raise your right hand. Go ahead and restate it.
I, I think the motion is to remove school principal and immediate supervisor of personnel records.
Okay, so again, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? All right, uh, the motion fails. Other recommendations?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
I've got to figure out where it is. Um, okay, page two, um, the second sentence, the employee may offer a written denial of the communication. And any such denial or explanation will become a part of his or her personnel file. I would like to, um, recommend that we change the first, um, denial to response.
Where is that again?
The employee may offer a written response of the communication because we don't know whether it's just a denial. Correct. Correct.
Well, we then need to change the other denial in that sentence as well.
No, because then the second one says denial or explanation.
Okay. So we have a recommendation that, uh, the employee may offer a written response of the communication. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Holmes, is there any discussion? All in favor, raise.
Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Shad.
Um, just a friendly. Just a friendly amendment from Mrs. Agostini. I think it should be written response to the communication rather than written response of the communication.
Right here. Page two. The employee may offer a written response to the communication. Are you accepting that friendly amendment?
I'll accept that.
Okay. So again, the motion now is the employee may offer a written response to the communication. We have a second by Dr. Holmes. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Any other recommendations?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is just minor housekeeping, but under responsibility for personnel files, at the end of page two, when it says Chief Human Resources Officer, just a small O, just to be consistent with how we're doing these policies now. Officer is capitalized.
All right. Any discussion? If we can raise our right hands. And motion passes unanimously. All right. Any other recommendations? All right. Policy twelve, or twelve dot seven, GB, C, drug, and alcohol-free workplace in schools. Any recommendations? Policy twelve dot eight, GBGA, staff health. Any recommendations? Policy twelve dot nine, GBGD, workers' compensation. Any recommendations? Item twelve dot ten, GDA, support staff positions. Any recommendations? Twelve dot eleven, GDB, support staff contracts and compensation. Any recommendations? Policy, item twelve dot twelve, policy DKC, expense authorization reimbursement. Any recommendations?
I have a question on that.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Agostini.
Give me a minute. Somewhere, it's, as pertains to the meals and how it'll be reimbursed, so, and since I didn't copy this out, but my question is along the lines of, so we've changed how much will be compensated each day and for each meal?
What we did, we, we got us a copy of a proviso passed by the state legislature that increased the dollar limits. And so they were, they were thirty twenty-five and thirty-two. They've gone to, I think, thirty-two and thirty-five. And rather than amend this each time the state legislature changes it, we suggest that we just say that we will adhere to the state rate established by state government.
Okay. So now it says actual expenses incurred, so receipts for each meal.
Except that they can't exceed the cost allowed by the state government, which is what we had before, which was the old cost established by state government.
Okay. But for each meal or for the day? Like if I, if somebody had a fifty-dollar dinner and submitted that?
No. The dollar amount is per day.
Okay.
Established by the state. And so we just thought, well, we'll just stick with this language. Whatever the state passes, we'll adopt that. And when it changes, we won't have to change the policy.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Dr. Myle.
Yes.
I do have a question. So it says actual expenses incurred. So does that mean that you're asking for receipts to be given, so?
Except that such costs cannot exceed the rate established by the law.
Yeah. I don't understand why we would say it that way as opposed to saying something to the line that we will follow state rates.
We're glad to do that.
I can't. Ms. Agostini, would you like to make a motion to maybe change that?
Well, we'd like to make a motion to take out the actual expenses incurred. Is that correct?
Yeah. Essentially, yes.
Accept that. No, no, accept. Delete that.
Can we have it say cost cannot exceed the rate established by the state of South Carolina?
Yes, that would be my motion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To delete everything up to that point? Okay. So motion's made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion? If I can have all the eyes, please, right hand. And motion passes unanimously. Any other discussion? All right. Thank you very much. We now have item twelve dot thirteen, the report on the Conference Center update. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Myle. We'll present to you this evening the report for the Conference Center. Dr. Myle.
Thank you. I'll first apologize for not having this to you prior to tonight, given that we had the end of the fiscal year, getting everybody paid, all the adjustments made. Our office has been very busy, but we hope that this will be able to, it's very short and brief. It's very similar to the last presentation, so we'd be glad to either postpone it to another board meeting or go ahead and go over it tonight. Be glad to.
Board, would y'all like to transfer or you want to go ahead and have it?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would like to move that we postpone this presentation.
Absolutely.
Until our next meeting.
Yes.
August sixth meeting. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Shad.
A friendly amendment that in the interim, that we receive the update.
Okay.
You, you accept that?
So we can look at it two ways. Either one, we're not taking any action on the policy. So if the board wants to review the two policies tonight, we can. Or if the board would also like to postpone the two policies, I just need to hear the board's will.
I would like to postpone it, but I also like to apologize to the ladies that's here that were ready to present tonight. So we do have to take that in consideration as well. So thank you, ladies.
Are y'all okay with coming back? That's like a loaded question. I, yeah, sorry. What if they said no? All right. So we'll, so we have, we're going to postpone then items twelve dot one three through twelve dot one five to our board workshop on the sixth. Thank you very much. And. Oh, it requires a vote. So I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes unanimously. All right. Item thirteen dot one, item agendas for August thirteenth. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So chair members of the board, call your attention to the future agenda items for the August thirteenth. Regular scheduled board meeting will be held on Tuesday. We will convene in the executive session at five thirty and start our public session at six thirty. We'll have call to order. We'll have executive session items, which will contain student appeals, request for in-district adult education program. And then we will convene or reconvene into public session at six thirty with inspirational moment, asking for the approval of the current agenda. We'll share special recognitions with you at that time. We'll ask for approval of our consent agenda. We'll have our very first school focus as well. We'll have public participation, legislative update, should there be one. We'll have our voting items, which will be our student appeals and student readmission requests. We have on here as well, old business, no action requested, this superintendent's evaluation. We'll have the old business action requested of the policies that we just shared with you that will be seeking for your approval. We'll have new business, no action requested, where we'll bring in policies ACA, KI, which is visitors, I'm sorry, ACA is the equity policy, KI is for visitors, and policy revisions, BCB, board member conflict of interest. We'll have our future agenda items for August twenty-seventh, public participation to board and superintendent comments, and if we need a second executive session, voting items for executive session two and adjournment.
All right. Any comments from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to see the homework policy included.
Mr. Chair, the homework policy has been added to the August sixth special call board meeting as requested by Ms. Agostini.
Ms. Agostini, is that adequate?
Yeah, that is. I just don't see it on this list of policy revisions for approval for the August thirteenth meeting.
It will be added once we present it to you in proposal, in proposal form on August sixth.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. With that, we'll move on to item fourteen dot one, approval of the draft agenda. If I can have a motion? Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make approval for the draft agenda items for August the sixth.
August the thirteenth.
Okay. I saw thirteenth here, but I know we're meeting on the sixth. So let me start over. I'd like to make approval for the draft agenda items for August thirteenth.
Motion's been made by Dr. Elkins Johnson. Do I have a second? Second by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll take the vote. We actually vote. We're back. And motion passes five to one. All right. Next on the agenda, we have public participation number two. Nobody signed up, so we'll move on to sixteen dot one, board and superintendent comments. I will start at my right with Ms. Agostini.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and welcome back to all those that are still sitting here. This weekend, or the past two weekends, I've got to see a lot of talent displayed, both in the pool and on the stage. I attended the TRIDAC for the first time. The presentations were phenomenal. I expected that there would be some talent with our middle school students, but I was wowed when I heard the corps start singing and then we heard the band play in the orchestra. And then on Saturday, watching these students that are just middle school students from the three districts come and perform in the theater, it was truly spectacular. And I want to take this opportunity to just give a shout out to a couple of my favorite swimmers who are Richland Two students. Sean Doll Rimple and you and Dolly Rimple, they're brothers, both attend Bethel Hanbury. Took a clean sweep of all of their events at the city meet. So their city meet champs, and then we have a seventh grader, his name is Sammy Erz. He's Det Middle School, is a state champion in the fifty-meter freestyle. So I want to give out a shout out to some of my favorite swimmers. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes.
I would just like to say you all have a great summer. I'm still in summer mode and I hope that you have a great summer also.
All right. Dr. Caution Parker.
Have a good evening.
Yeah. Dr. Elkins Johnson?
As always, thanks for coming. And I was looking, because I don't see anyone represented from SC for Ed. Do we have anyone here from SC for Ed? We don't. So let me just give a message for SC for Ed. I know how you guys feel about making sure that you're being treated with equity. I would love for you to go back and look at policy GBJ, personnel records and files. And I would love for you to rally your teachers, your community, your family, your friends, and have them to go back and take a look at policy GBJ, personnel records and files, and see how they feel about going to new schools or different schools and having a new principal go back and take a look in their personnel files. And tell me what you think. I'd love to hear back from you. Again, that's policy GBJ, personnel records and files. I look forward to hearing from you, SC for Ed.
Thank you, Mr. Shad.
Y'all have a good evening. Thank you.
Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, to our community. Our Richland School District Two will kick off the 2019-2020 school year with a back-to-school bash on Saturday, August the third. From ten AM to two PM, the bash is being held here at R2I2 location at 763 Fashion Drive in the Village of Sand Hills. We're planning a fun field day for Richland Two students to collect free book bags, backpacks, and school supplies and receive valuable information about community resources. We still need college rule notebook, paper, spiral notebooks, and composition notebooks. Donations can be dropped off at R2I2 Monday through Thursday. So please, if you have any materials that you want to donate or drop off for our students, let's make sure that all of our students start the school year with an adequate amount of supplies for the nineteen twenty, twenty year. Come out and enjoy music, games, and food. The district and Richland Two Education Foundation will be sponsoring this event. The weekend of August second through the fourth is also a tax-free weekend in South Carolina, so items exempt during the tax-free weekend include clothing, footwear, bow ties, neckties, music, music instruments used for school assignments, book bags, calculators, computers, laptops, and printers. These items and more will be exempt from the state's six percent sale tax, so take advantage. We are a month away from the start of the new school year. The first day of school is Wednesday, August the twenty-first. Wow. Step Up the Sixth and Fresh Start will happen Tuesday, August twentieth, for our sixth graders and high school freshmen. And congratulations to Jerry Eaton. He is the 2019 Substitute Teacher of the Year. Eaton, a professional track star, has substituted primarily at Richland Northeast High School for the past four years. He is a volunteer track coach for the Cavaliers. Congratulations, Mr. Eaton, and thank you all so much.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. You just made me sad with the month away from the start of school. So you may notice that we had the superintendent's evaluation. We will, at our August the sixth meeting, we will provide an update on that evaluation in public session. Other than that, I again want to thank Ms. Mackey for being the board chair for the last year. Tremendous job to undertake. And with that, y'all have a great summer. Do I have a motion to adjourn? So Mu, do I have a second? Second. Y'all have a great evening.